Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins? Mr. Oh, I see his hand. Okay, he's coming on. Mr. Cardet Hernandez? Mr. Meta?
Hi.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Hi, Sam.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neill?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the July 26 meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translation that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabavariano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Before we get started tonight, I would like to share a brief update. As you know, this is a special school committee meeting focused solely on the superintendent's self-evaluation. It does not feature a public comment period. There will be an opportunity for public comment on the superintendent's evaluation at the next regular committee meeting on August 30th at 5:00 PM, at which time the committee will present its evaluation of the superintendent for school year 2223. We will now move right into our report, the superintendent's self-evaluation for school year 2223. I'd like to once again briefly lay out the process. Among the primary responsibilities of the Boston School Committee is the hiring, supervising, and evaluation of the superintendent. While Superintendent Skipper hasn't had a full year with us, that date comes in October 2023, her contract calls for the committee to do an evaluation before the beginning of the next school year. There are four steps of the evaluation. Number one, goals that we agree to. Number two, a self-evaluation done by the superintendent. Number three, individual member evaluations. And number four, summative assessment based on those individual evaluations, and then a vote on the assessment. Tonight, we are beginning the process with the presentation of the superintendent's self-evaluation. The committee will then conduct its evaluation. We will evaluate her against the sixth goal she first presented to the committee last October. Number one, prioritizing and accelerating academic performance. Number two, strengthening access to social emotional learning. Three, streamlining operations and ensuring student safety. Four, developing authentic family and community engagement practices. Five, improving internal and external communication with families and the staff. And six, increasing accountability for both the central office and our schools. The evaluation will be conducted in accordance with the guidance provided by DESI's framework comprising four standards. One, instructional leadership. Two, management in operations. Three, family and community engagement. And four, professional culture. I'm going to pause there so the superintendent can walk us through her self-evaluation. After her presentation, I will open it up for questions and then discuss the timeline moving forward. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Good evening and thank you, Chair, and just thank you for giving me the opportunity to update you as I near the completion, as you said, of my first year superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. First, I just want to say what an honor and a privilege it is to be back here, leading the district that actually developed and allowed me to be the educator today that I am. I'm proud of my team, exceptionally proud of my team, and the foundation for change and success that we're building together. I also want to take a moment to thank you, Chair Robinson, and Vice Chair O'Neill, and the members of the committee for your support over the past 10 months. As a new superintendent, your support as my school committee has been essential. This is challenging work, and I value the expertise, the experience, the perspective that each of you brings to the work. And I want to thank you for your continued partnership, your collaboration, and for always thought-provoking questions and suggestions and recommendations. As you know, this is my first self-eval as BPS superintendent, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity that a self-evaluation offers to really reflect on the work we've done. And also, it really does frame the work that we have yet to do and need to do. Since becoming superintendent, I've learned and relearned a great deal about our district, our SIP plan, the Council of Great City Schools reports, the Ernest Young audit around data practice, my school visits, meetings with students, families, parents, partners, staff. These have all helped me in this first year to understand what has worked, what is working, and what we need to change. I know when new superintendents begin, there's a tendency to abandon what's been already done and really chart an entirely new course. There's a desire in many ways to put your own stamp on the work. That really isn't my style. It's never been my style. First, I just believe there's too much good work that has been done in the BPS over the years under some really talented leaders, and I would never put those gains aside. My approach has always been to, you know, whether it was as High School Network soup or superintendent in Somerville, to come in and assess, you know, where we are, what we have, determine what's working with our team, and with team is critical. Listen to the experiences of those who work for the system. Incorporate the voices of those that the system serves, and then build a strong foundation that prepares the district for the future. This past year, I have worked to do that assessment while also actively making improvements. Coming into BPS in the situation we were in required me to do both and required our team to do both. I prioritized building back a strong foundation while at the same time creating and strengthening critical systems and structures that the district needs to run. Every BPS student must have rigorous, standards-based, culturally and linguistically responsive learning within the least restrictive environment. That is our value system and mission. In order to thrive, students must be offered a continuum of services, and they have to have access to native language instruction in a school building that is welcoming, safe, sustainable, close to home, and offers 21st century spaces and technology. Through my reorientation to BPS, I'm clear that there's a great deal of work to be done, both at the district level and in our schools, so that we can say collectively we've met that vision. I know we all feel a sense of urgency about this work, and I and the team are working hard to do strategic, sustainable, and meaningful work that will help, that will actually help us to make as much progress as possible for our students and our families and as quickly as possible. But we must re-ground our district with a strong vision that focuses and accelerates academic performance and supports inclusive settings at all schools. And that can only be possible by making sure we increase access to native language opportunities for our multilingual learners, and we increase access to least restrictive environments for our students with disabilities, including those who are multilingual. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to just walk through the four standards as they are set up for the evaluation. As Chair Robinson said, instructional leadership, management and ops, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And I'm going to do a few key highlights in each area. There's a lot to cover, and so I'll keep it high level and then go deep in a few areas. So first, instructional leadership. Under the amazing leadership of Dr. Linda Chen, who is our Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, and the amazing Dr. Drew Eccleston, Chief of Schools and Accountability, we've taken important steps to ensure every BPS classroom has strong tier-one instruction. All students must have access, and again, to high-quality, rigorous instruction that is inclusive of students with disabilities, multilingual learners, as well as advanced learners. Through our equitable literacy work, we've created uniform expectations and provided specific training, materials, and components for staff to make sure all students, especially those who have been underserved in our district, have access to that promise of high-quality instruction every day, in every classroom, in every school. We're making progress with our vision and plan that every BPS school is inclusive and can offer that continuum of services to all students to meet their needs. Inclusive education in BPS means that we're increasing access to native language learning opportunities for multilingual learners and increasing access to least restrictive environments for students with disabilities, including those who are multilingual. We're also expanding bilingual education, access to native language, and working towards implementing the strategic plan of the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, which we call OME. And we're starting to see results from that implementation. More of our multilingual learners are receiving the services they are entitled to than in previous years. We grew from 89% of multilingual learners receiving the appropriate amount of English instruction to 94%. We are also continuing our work transforming schools to support inclusive practice. Taking lessons learned from this year and many of the recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools, we're actively working on our inclusive education plan. It will be submitted to DESI in August as part of our SIP requirement. We'll share that plan once it's submitted. We're asking all schools to have their IPT or their inclusion planning teams up and running so we can roll out inclusion by grade span for school year 2425. We'll provide additional PD for our educators, and we'll ensure staff have the training and resources they need to serve our students in inclusive settings where students have access to native language instruction and to least restrictive environment. We've also made great strides in many other areas and continue to work on, for instance, early college, where we've expanded our early college opportunities at multiple high schools, moving our footprint to 14 programs in seven different BPS high schools for 2324, and increasing our number of students served in early college programs from 290 to 740. In our career tech education, which we call CTE, we've expanded CTE opportunities, specifically pathways for alternative high schools, for alternative schools throughout the rollout of our new integrated career training pathways. And this was important because our alternative schools often got looked over and were not given the same opportunities for their students as the rest of our schools. Student attendance, to help address both the daily and chronic attendance problem, we've made several key investments, including additional supervisors of attendance across our regional network model, and have developed strategies, including providing small grants that are incentives for schools this past year to help focus resources and get our students back in school. Our student support work has come to include restorative justice implementation. The SUCIDE-Boston Department will be adding nine additional restorative justice, or what we call SAAS, Safe and Welcoming School Specialist, and a restorative justice program director to support this important work. And this, in particular, will grow over the years. In the area of mental health supports, our partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission will bring more mental health clinicians and trauma-informed practice and care to our highest-needs schools. Through our collaboration with the Health Commission, we formed a RFP process, and Franciscan Children's was chosen and will offer supervision, licensure support, salary support, and stipends to 22 early-career clinicians placed in 10 BPS schools. And I think we all know the amount of loss that BPS has experienced this year in our students, many of whom, you know, we've had in the double digits of students who have passed away from medical issues, violence, accidents. Our schools have had a tremendous amount of trauma to deal with, and we believe that this is one step that will help next year in additional support for those schools who have had the greatest amount of trauma. There's a lot more that I wrote in my self-eval in detail, cut in each of the areas, and I'm happy to take questions or dive deeper on the instructional side. I'm going to switch to management and operations, which is what we consider standard two in the eval. I've been, since day one, I think I've said, you know, that strong systems and operations are critical for large organizations like BPS to succeed, and this continues to be a top area of focus for me and for the team, as some of our systems are not currently working to meet the district's needs. To function at that very high level, we need to recognize the interdependencies of our systems and our work. We have to collaborate across our organization, and that means both our schools and departments in Central if we really are to reach the vision of being an inclusive district. The SIP or the Systemic Improvement Plan, it provides a roadmap for creating and rebuilding some of the systems, particularly in the areas of facilities, transportation, student safety, multilingual learners, special education, transformation schools, and data. Additionally, the Council of Great City Schools reports have been instrumental in providing and adding to that roadmap. We've created cross-functional teams, which have developed metrics to track implementation, and we're using KPIs or what we call key performance indicators that allow us to understand, did we do what we said? How well did we do it? Did it make a difference for kids? And how do we know? I've restructured our district and leadership team with three deputy superintendents supporting specific areas of work, academics, operations, and equity, family, and community advancement. These deputies, along with my chief of staff and senior advisors, work closely together with me to prioritize, to manage, to execute on the work that we're sharing tonight. We also have an organizational chart that is clear, is available to the public. It's up on our website, bostonpublicschools.org, and we include in that the brief bios of our leadership team, but the most important thing is that it's clear and it's sustainable for the organization. With the input of school leaders and liaisons, we organized our schools into a regional network model. There's nine regional teams that operate like satellites of the central office, working independently, you know, with their ops leader and their school soup and their team. And in some cases, they work even collaboratively in triads, working across evaluation and addressing challenges and needs of schools in each of the regions, while also really maintaining that strong relationship to the central team and support. Building a strong, stable, and diverse team was a number-one priority coming in and making sure that that team has clear roles that are sustainable and responsibilities that they can speak to. This is the work that really allows us to have that clear accountability that's really student outcome-driven that we speak of so much. But to build a diverse and talented team who see BPS as a great place to work, as I did when I started, you know, back in 1989, it's critical that we really work to support our labor. You know, we have to keep our labor contracts and salaries competitive and current. I'm proud to say in my first year that we've brought all 18 of our outstanding labor contracts with our unions up to date. And working with the Office of Labor Relations, we've developed an internal cross-functional team that negotiates to ensure that we're planning and we're prepared for future negotiations, and that's very different than how it's been in the past. Another building block of our foundation is ensuring that all of our students are safe and, you know, that they're in buildings that are clean and bright and inspiring, you know, for them to learn. And we know that a lot of our facilities are in desperate need of major repairs or renovations. You know, we've almost three quarters of our buildings are, you know, pre-World War II. And so really, this has been an important part this year and to the end of last. Under the leadership of Dr. Sam DePina, who's our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, the district's in the final stages of development of two incredibly important and foundational tools that will allow us to create a long-term facilities plan, something the district has needed desperately for decades. By the end of this summer, we will have a facilities condition assessment complete. And that is, that is going to be so pivotal for us in the work that we need to do going forward with our committee. We will also, you know, use this facilities condition assessment data in conjunction with what we call the capital predictor and asset essentials to really look at information through multiple lenses. And this will help us to develop a 10-year infrastructure plan, which will help the district prioritize capital projects and inform decisions on potential consolidations, closures, mergers, new builds, significant renovations, anything having to do with the buildings and the community. And we expect to share this plan early next year with committee. By the end of 2023, we will also have completed the pre-K to 6, 7 to 12 design study, and this will enable us to accelerate the pace of school construction and renovation. We've also started to implement the school and student safety recommendations provided by the Council of Great City Schools. As you remember, they were, they were quite lengthy, but all very appropriate. We, for instance, created and designed the Office of Emergency Management after having done a lot of intensive research in other districts. We have filled all of the safety specialist positions, which last year when we began, we were half-full. We've developed new training for our specialists, which focus on de-escalation and trauma-informed practice so that they can support our students and communities appropriately. We've created community connection coordinators who will work with the school and the community leaders to provide access to resources and to really support in a tailored way, resources from the city with families that need them. And we've hired an internal communication specialist and developed protocols and provided training for schools to understand when they should communicate with families, particularly around anything related to school safety. And that was a major concern when I first came in that I heard from numerous times from families and community members that they did not feel they were getting information when incidences happened. And that is very different now. We send out anywhere between five and 15 notices in a given day in the normal course of the school year. Additionally, providing safe and reliable and on-time transportation is critical for ensuring our students can access their education. I'm happy to share that we will enter the upcoming 2023-24 school year in a very different place than a year ago with our yellow bus transportation service. The district is fully staffed for bus drivers for the first time since prior to COVID-19 and the pandemic. We're working actively with TransDev, who holds the contract, and through that, we've hired 200 bus drivers since May of 2022. These also include 139 of the drivers who we actually provided and TransDev did, provided paid CDL training. And that was a new initiative that was a way to solve the shortage of bus drivers we saw nationally. We have a new contract in place with the vendor, with TransDev, that builds on the progress that we've made. And for the first time, there's meaningful financial incentives and penalties that are part of the contract. We've redesigned our bus monitor coverage so that all buses transporting students with disabilities will have a minimum of one monitor onboard, and we continue to make significant progress in hiring bus monitors so that families of special education students do not experience the service disruptions that happened this past year. So that families of special education students do not experience the service disruptions that happened this past year. In total, the district has hired a hundred and seventy-five bus monitors during twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And currently has a hundred and five new monitors in queue waiting for hire. We anticipate starting the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with more than seven hundred monitors. And we will continue to recruit, to hire and to train additional bus monitors. And a shout out to um, member Polanco Garcia and Saint Stevens uh, for the support, um, as always with, with hiring and getting the word out. We also with our transportation improved the on-time performance last year and resolved a greater percentages of missing GPS data. Um, as the year progressed, you can see our data continually climbing and GPS data that was missing declining. On our transportation hotline, the district added a dedicated uh, bus monitors hotline. Uh, which is a, a queue that families um, of students with disabilities could access specifically for those families. Uh, and in addition to our existing multilingual staff, um, we continue to hire and expand our language capacity um, to improve communications with our families. So that's, that's kind of the deep dive on a few of the things within um, operations and management. And now I'm going to turn to family and community, um, equity, family and community engagement. Uh, so when I returned to the BPS, uh, I, I found that um, almost all groups of stakeholders that I met with, so families, students, uh, community partners, nonprofits, the business community. Whoever the stakeholder was, they, they all, for the most part, expressed feeling and especially exacerbated by the pandemic and all the leadership change. Just a disconnect from the BPS, not sure how to enter, how to get information, not sure of the relationship. Um, and so I really needed to, um, a- as I said in my priorities with family and community engagement, really needed to you know, make a priority uh, of what meaningful engagement could look like. To be honest, this was very different than the BPS I had left seven years ago. Um, you know, I, I really do think it's just, it's the turnover of leadership in the pandemic that just exacerbated it. Um, but it was very clear to me that um, this was something that needed immediate attention. So in addition to, um, I, I think also um, family and community staffing was also understaffed. Um, that was the other thing that we found both centrally and in the schools. And so all of this, I think, uh, kind of contributed to that. So that's, you know, frankly, I, I mean, I've, from the start, I've, I've said how much I feel that our families are our greatest partners in the work. And being in Boston, all of these other stakeholders are also extremely important to the work because they can actually make our district even, even more valued and special. Um, and so I chose to elevate um, and create equity, family and community advancement and school site councils and eh, eh, in the work because of the importance. Um, so in the reorganization, um, I raised equity, family and community engagement advancement and uh, hired Dr. Anna Tavarez to lead that division. Um, and then also this past year really have honed in on school site councils as an area of needing reworking. Um, under Dr. Tavarez's leadership, we've increased support for our school site councils. Um, adding a liaison in each of the regions and beginning next year will deliver on mandated training for school staff and families so that they understand the important role that school site councils play in the vision of, in the commitment of the school. Um, this came from hearing back from our parents um, and school leaders. Um, that this would be, this would be a, a good next step and helpful. And so we took that advice. Um, to address the concerns around communication in general that parents and families shared. And to begin to rebuild the trust, and I say begin because that will take time. Um, but to begin to rebuild the trust with our families and stakeholders. We've implemented streamlined protocols and procedures to communicate really critical information to families and school communities as quickly as possible um, in their home language. Uh, I want to be clear that incidences that we now notify families about were happening before. In fact, incidences in our district overall are down from last year. Um, but what was missing was a connection of sharing the information with the community and our families in a timely way, um, and, and what happened in a given incident. And we are doing that and we will continue to work to do that. Um, and to build and enhance our communications team so that we can mobilize and respond to any situation and really keep family information at the center. We also continue to grow the BPS helpline. Um, this is a customer service hub that helps families looking for information about the district. Um, this opened in May of twenty twenty-two and, and the hel- the helpline has supported close to twenty-four thousand members of the BPS community, including parents, schools, community partners, operational divisions. Um, really to help them get information, access resources, navigate challenges, address concerns and really support larger impact engagements like district-wide meetings or school emergencies. Um, so that, that hot helpline has really been essential and we're so happy that parents in particular are using it and will use it more. In addition to ensuring our families have a place to call and ask questions, we also want to support and increase their involvement in our schools. Um, we're currently working to identify a community partner who can develop um, or utilize a ready-made parent mentoring program. Um, this actually came out of some strong recommendations um, from our work with Saint Stevens. And we expect to award that contract by the end of the summer. Um, and our partner will begin that work next year with us and we see that as critically important. Um, I also met regularly in addition to, you know, all the different types of events that are wonderful to go to and trying to visit as many schools as I can because that's my really happy place. Um, but I also met with just, um, you know, so many of our city's active parent groups. Um, and then just always so impressed with their passion, their commitment, continuing commitment to the work. Um, and they helped me to be able to represent and to hear um, from broader stakeholder groups of families. Um, and I, I, I want to build on that this year and, you know, uh, really, really try to uh, understand the broader parents, um, uh, and, and what we can do um, as a district, uh, you know, to, for them. Um, we're also currently developing a partnership with the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce, so thinking about the business community and how to reengage the business community. Um, you know, the, this will help to, uh, we believe, um, will help to lay a roadmap for how BPS and business community can work together, particularly around our hub schools model. Um, and particularly helping, um, you know, initiatives like our mentoring uh, or our internship programming. Uh, businesses want to be involved and support, but it hasn't been clear how. So we are working with the chamber right now to look at what are successful models in other districts nationally. And hoping to take some of those practices back here to, to BPS. Terms of professional culture, which is the last standard, um, leadership change over the, the last seven years. And the return of and kind of continued impact of, of the pandemic. They've been a challenge everywhere, but they've been a challenge particularly here in BPS. Um, it's been incredibly important to me to build a culture of stability. A pet, you know, that's passion and joy for, for our staff, um, who are just so hardworking and committed. Um, first, establishing regular cadence of communication has been important. Um, and you know, I think doing this through, um, you know, regular meeting times and focus of our meetings with our team, it's, it's helping to build the strong relationships, the sense of team, the the kind of the healthy communication and vision that comes from getting to know one another in the work. Um, to give you a, a sense, I meet weekly with uh, I or Rochelle meet weekly with the division chiefs, um, you know, to update each other on the work to grow as a team, to um, to see the interconnection of the work. Um, and then obviously to dive deep on priority areas. I meet monthly with the executive team. And this is space that really allows the cabinet, the chiefs, um, and also the, the school superintendents, um, to, to really kind of come together and look at school level data. Um, to talk about strategies and plans uh, for rolling out and district initiatives. Um, that all happens, um, it, it's just, it's, it's strong professional growth. Um, and it just again supports strong communication systems within BPS that allows um, all of these leaders to be able to go out and do the work we need to carry out our vision. Um, I can't say enough about our school superintendents. Um, they play a critical role between schools and central office. Um, same with our operational leaders. Um, but the school superintendent, you know, they're leading those regional teams. Um, I remember as a school soup, how important uh, that sense of team and that team having the right information was to executing the work. And so really, um, the schools division under Dr. Eccleson has done such a great job ensuring that that work is tight, that the school superintendents are meeting regularly, they're looking at data. They know their schools and they're focused on student outcome. We also can't have a great district unless we have a strong and stable school leadership core. Um, this is, this has really been important to me. Um, it has to be a, a group of school leaders who understand the academic work and its priority. Who know how to support the work operationally, who support the whole child. And who respect and engage their staff and their families. Uh, and I am proud of the, I am proud of the school principals and school leaders that we have here. Um, I meet monthly with a school leadership cabinet. Um, and the deputies attend that, the chiefs often too, just so that um, we can hear from school leaders directly. You know, their voice, their thinking, um, how the field is experiencing changes that we're making or proposing. Um, and that includes small decisions and includes big decisions. So that's an important uh, information workflow. Um, we also, uh, I also worked, uh, or we worked collaboratively with the school leadership, with the school leader cabinet um, to make changes to the current principal contract. Um, it had not been done in seven years. Uh, in fact, since I had left and um, we looked at everything, including how to make it um, respectful and of the work, the deep work that our school leaders do and um, and also competitive because keeping our leaders and having them be stable here is really important. And so we looked at everything from base salary, uh, providing them um, more educational and professional opportunities, uh, adding retention bonus. Um, it was, the contract was long overdue. And uh, this year we saw a significantly less turnover rate of our school leaders than in any of the previous years. Um, so that really allows us to start next year already ahead. Um, clear expectations, training, professional development helped to bring out the best in our workforce. Um, schools division and the academic team has developed and coordinated meaningful PD um, for our school leaders and educators so they keep growing. And lastly, um, it's been a focus of this year to improve our internal communication as an organization. Um, we're a large organization and we have a lot of responsibilities across it. Um, ensuring that staff all have a clear understanding of what the priorities are and how their work relates allows them to really have the confidence to execute the work and the tools they need to do that. Um, sometimes this breakdown of ownership and execution um, was happening across our schools and district departments. Um, particularly like for instance, in connection with uh, critical incidents that would happen. Um, and so developing a communication protocol and cadence um, was enabled us to be able to make sure our schools and our district were handling critical incidences the same way. And making sure that any kind of large-scale announcement, whether it was um, just an announcement or whether it was uh, something to do with an incident was being done in a, in a uniform, universal way. Um, so there's lots more I could go into. I'm, I'm sure, um, everybody will, you know, have some questions. Um, but I just wanted to thank you again for, um, just the opportunity to be able to share the work. And I say our work because it really is a team effort and, and teamwork in this. Um, it, it wouldn't happen um, without the team's dedication and that's both the team that's at Central and the team that's in our schools. Uh, and that includes our teachers, our educators, our food service, you know, every- everybody um, makes this work. Um, I do want to be clear, there's a lot of work ahead. Um, you know, when, when I came into this role. Um, I knew that and um, everybody that walks through the door for a job, we make sure they know that. This is about, you know, making a commitment to building this district in a sustainable um, way that meets the needs of our kids for now and for the future. And um, we are every day are growing in that way. Um, but you know, coming in, I, I, you know, I just, um, I think, uh, being able to sort of relearn the district has also helped me to see just how much more we have to do. Um, but the good news is you have a team and you have, um, in me, uh, folks that are wanting deeply to do this work and committed to it. Um, so with that, I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to lead and uh, and to be part of this. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for sharing those very thoughtful reflections on your first year superintendent. Um, really appreciate all the hard work you have put in as we begin this next leg of this journey. I'll now open it up to questions for the superintendent and I just want to remind members that this is the beginning of the process and each of you will have a more in-depth opportunity to provide feedback through your evaluations. So with that, I just want to open it up to questions. Dr. Alkins?
Sure. Thank you for the, um, for the summary and um, for the report. Um, I think from, so from your standpoint, I mean, you've laid out some, some key priority areas. Um, you know, for you, what it, what do you think is probably the most pressing? Um, I mean, we're, I mean, as far as the SIP goes, all of it's pressing, but I mean, in terms of like structuring it. Where do you feel that the attention should be, should be paid, um, like there? Um, and I actually, I mean, I'll probably set up a call with you afterwards to talk more about sort of like the, um, the inclusion planning teams and things like that in more detail. Um, because I am curious about that and um, the numbers of folks and who's included in that and things like that. Um, but then also from a standpoint of, you know, something that we've heard um, from the public, um, and I think it's something that we've all thought about is you know, the, the, the level of accountability that has to exist, um, for everyone like that is involved. And I think it's great that you know, you've, you've laid out some, some, some structural changes and I think, you know, some systemic changes that if implemented correctly, you know, um, you know, should, you like, should yield results. And I, I think the, the, the question on my end is like, you know, what happens when you're hitting those roadblocks? How do you plan to sort of pivot and, and, and do those things so that we're still meeting the marks? And you know, the students are the ones that ultimately suffer. Yeah, you know, the, you know, that. So I'm, I'm just curious as to, you know, how you're thinking about contingencies, how you're thinking about evaluation. Um, and uh, yeah, we'll start there.
Sure. So, um, I mean, I'll start with sort of the priority pieces. So I think the I think the six areas, um, that I laid out at the beginning around, um, what I was considering the priorities was an attempt to honor the goals and the work that the school committee had previously done, the work that was done in the strategic plan and yet um, still encompassed the work that as I was going through the year saw firsthand that needed to be done. Um, and so we will be staying with those and working through each of those areas. And so I think what you'll see in the evaluation is not only is it around the four standards, but it's also really starting to explain how we're Explain how we're approaching each of those buckets or buckets of work. I think in the academic work, it's clearly. The inclusion plan, the developing a plan for inclusive education, which is both. And and this is a nuance that like can't be lost. But it is both decrease, like increasing least restrictive access, right? Environment for students with disabilities. And it's at the same time also increasing the ability for our multilingual learners to have access to native language. And so the those two things. In in our vision of setting up inclusive education. Touches so many parts of our systems. It's our enrollment system, it's how we write I E Ps, it's how we transport, it's how we communicate. And engage families around the work, it's the deep PD and training of universal design in the schools. It's strong M T S S student support systems, it's literally touches all parts. So that that just alone, which is just one part of the SIP, but that just alone. Really is kind of an umbrella priority area. And so that will be a lot of what I will continue to put attention to this coming year. I think some of the work that Dr. Chen has done with her team. Is brilliant. And I think that. Despite a lot of the recommendations for what should happen. Both in council grade city schools and within the SIP. There there wasn't a roadmap, right? There wasn't like a true roadmap, it had to be developed based on the context of BPS. And I think that team through time has had to take it and really put it on and walk down roads and then walk back and walk back down roads. And I think we're finally at a point now with an inclusive education plan. That we can start to actualize. So that both excites me because of what it will mean for our students. It, you know, it also fulfills a promise that. From a choice perspective, it gives our families more choice and our students more choice. If they're a student with disabilities as to the schools that they can, that they're be able to attend. But also a promise that if you're a multilingual learner. That as part of that, you will not have to choose either or, but you will have some additional access. To to native language. So that would be in the academic one. I think the other just large area right now is ops and systems and structures. I think as you know, as we've reported out as a committee. Almost every one of these needed to be rebuilt or does need to be rebuilt. So started with the ones that were touch points back to SIP. But that doesn't mean that, you know, O H C and the work that's happening in human capital. That that doesn't need deep look and, you know, once a leader is in place, deep look and audit. Financial and looking at the reimagining, you know, process that we're about to go through with the budget. You know, that will give us a deep look into our financials in ways that we haven't since we started with weighted student formula. So I think for a district our size. Those systems and structures support in every possible way how we get our academics to work. And if they're not working and they're not. And they're not functioning at a hi- at the highest level possible. Then the result of that is that our students actually bear that, they just bear it through academics. So and our staff bear it. So that's going to also be something like. I'll move away from some of the systems like transportation and student safety because we've now worked through them and redesigned them. And now move on to O H C and finance and food service, right, as kind of those next ones. Family engage, family and community advancement, engagement and advancement. One of the things that. We attended PELP as a team, a district team. And one of the. One of the sessions that we attended that I think resonated with all of us, but I can speak for myself. Was the one that Dr. Karen Map gave. Because she she really highlighted the difference between family involvement and family engagement. And I had been looking for like a frame, like something that I could hold on to to say. You know, why we're doing these things, but parents are not, that's not what they want, they want something else and. It all kind of clicked, I think, for us that we need to shift. From a family involvement model to a family engagement model where really decision making. And in input is more than just kind of a talking at or listening. And so that is going to be something that for this year in having conversations with Dr. Tavarez. We will begin to to work on that and and hopefully work with Dr. Map and others around that work. And then, you know, professional culture, I I have to say like. We can't have the the high functioning organization that we all seek and that our students deserve. If we don't feel accountable to the work. And if we don't hold ourselves and others accountable to the work. There is something to be said about do your job, right? Like if we do our jobs to the best of our ability. And we look at our student outcomes and we are, we are, we are true to that. Then we will get the results that that we need. But I think sometimes when you have a lot of churn in leadership. And a lot of change, you know, you restart and start and restart and start. And then the pandemic, it becomes very difficult to establish all that accountability. I think we're beyond that and I think we, this was a big first year for us. In in setting up what accountability means both of ourselves individually. And as an organization in our roles. And that was really the hope of the clarity of that org chart in the divisions. Welcome.
It's Polanco Garcia.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Superintendent for for the report. Yo pienso que de la única manera que nosotros podemos entender. El presente y el futuro es hablando un poquito del pasado.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for the report. The only way we can understand. What the point where we are, we have to understand the past and we have to understand our future as well.
Entonces es importante destacar que nosotros hemos tenido por años, por mucho tiempo ya. Muchas, vamos a decir muchos problemas en el distrito de Boston por ser un 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 distrito multicultural, multilingüe y con muchas demandas especiales.
We have to consider that being Boston, a district that is multicultural. Multi ethnic and multilingual, we had many difficulties in the past for the same nature of the district itself.
Y hemos pasado por muchos cambios de liderazgo también.
We have to note as well that we had experienced many changes in leadership.
Yo tuve la oportunidad de participar en la escuela de negocio de Harvard en un entrenamiento que. Me ayudó mucho a entender algunos puntos clave que quisiera discutir bien breve y compartir con ustedes acá.
So I had the opportunity to participate in this great training that we had at HBA's Harvard Business School. And would like to review a couple of points. It's been a great learning experience for me.
Nosotros como cuerpo de gobernanza debemos enfocarnos en los mejores resultados de los estudiantes y en eso estamos claro.
Governance body that we are, we have to concentrate in the best outcomes for the students that we have clear.
Entonces nosotros como como su- como supervisores, como veladores. De el trabajo de la superintendenta y de su equipo.
So we have to consider as well our role as supervisors and those who are looking at the work that the superintendent is doing.
Vamos a evaluarla unilateralmente cada uno de nosotros.
We will be able to provide an individual evaluation for each. Post the public school committee member.
Y esta es, y esta es la una de las primeras reuniones que vamos a tener, sé que nosotros vamos a estar llamándola, vamos a estar llamándole, vamos a estar haciendo preguntas.
So this is one of the first meetings that we are having in that regard and we will be asking questions to you.
En este encuentro donde tuvimos la universidad aprendí que muchas de las situaciones que nosotros tenemos en Boston hay otros distritos que también la tienen y peores.
So one of the learnings that I had at the Harvard Business School for the training that we had. Is that many of the districts nationwide. Had actually the same problems that we have and sometimes they are worse, those problems are worse than we have, that we have.
Es importante que nosotros podamos tener, a mí me gustaría ver en una evaluación de la superintendenta qué pasaba antes, qué está pasando ahora. Por ejemplo, una pregunta, cuántos maestros después que me nombraron superintendenta, cuántos maestros bilingües. Yo he con, en mi gestión se han contratado para poder poner en marcha. El acceso al idioma nativo, la implementación del idioma nativo.
So that's important and critical to understand the different metrics that took place before the superintendent then. Took her position and what happened after, for example, different metrics like. How many bilingual teachers we had before and how many different positions had been implemented after you took the role of superintendent. Especially with the native language.
Exactly. Es importante que nosotros podamos distinguir qué pasó, qué qué teníamos antes y qué tenemos ahora. La superintendenta tiene diez meses en la posición de superintendenta, ¿verdad? Entonces podemos decir cuántos para profesional bilingüe hemos contratado para la implementación del idioma nativo. Para poder ayudar a los maestros.
Should I to be able to help the teachers, we have to be able to understand how many paraprofessionals that are bilingual. We had before and how many we had now, that therefore it is critical to understand this metrics from before and now. Considering that the superintendent then it's been in her position for only ten months.
Cuántas trabajadoras sociales, cuántas personas, hay personal de apoyo, está dándole apoyo socioemocional a los estudiantes ahora. Antes cuánto teníamos, cuánto tenemos ahora.
In different positions, for example, how many social workers do we have? How many people supporting the students do we have? How many persons do we have providing social emotional support to be able to quantify this?
Y estamos hablando de un distrito inclusivo, nosotros sabemos. Que para que haya un distrito inclusivo, las aulas de inclusión, cómo van a funcionar? Van a tener un maestro especializado, van a tener un maestro regular y una para profesional, cómo establece la ley?
So it is critical to understand how an inclusive environment works. There will be a special education teacher, there will be a regular education teacher and a paraprofessional, paraprofessional.
Para poder tener un verdadero, una verdadero salones de inclusión que cumplan con los parámetros que tienen que cumplir.
So it is critical to have this environment of inclusion so they'll be able to fulfill the metrics and the objectives that they are abided by law.
Entonces, agradezco mucho su, vuelvo y le repito, agradezco mucho su. Su autoevaluación, a veces es difícil uno uno mismo autoevaluarse. Pero entiendo que vamos a tener, vamos a tener preguntas como esta, yo voy a estar teniendo. Para poder yo tener una 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 evaluación con mayor conciencia y poder hacer bien mi tarea.
Should I to be able to do my job in a good way, it is important to have this self evaluation. Sometimes it is difficult to have a self evaluation of our own. As difficult as it is, but I will be asking this type of questions to be able to better understand my role.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Thank you. First of all. Congratulations on the completion of all eighteen labor contracts. I think that's a. That's a big step to satisfy. Our workforce contentment to certain extent. The the two, the two area. That I'd like to know a little bit more about. The first one is. The. Hold on. Just hold on one second. The the first one is the SIP, the. With the recommendation from the Council of Great City School. That we need to. That that somehow you will be submitting in August. As part of our SIP. That would include the inclusion planning teams and. And that will some, in some way. Enhanced and improved. Staff in terms of special education and ESL. I understand that right now. We are offering native language. As a course or as a means of of learning. And instruction in school. I I'm I'm just wondering. How do you sell that to native language parents? As far as I know, a lot of native language parents. Are opposed to that idea and. The number of students, the native language speakers in those programs. In my own assessment are not up to the the kind of expectation that we would like to see. In relation to the Look Act. So how do we do that? How how do we ensure that? Native language instruction and learning will somehow be an essential part of. Of 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 SIP. The other thing regarding parents. Is the fact that you mentioned. There will be some sort of. Contracts or initiatives. In the near future to expand on parent mentoring. I agree with you. Parent. Involvement. Is not as crucial as. The what what's the other word, parents. One is parents and involvement, the other is parent. Engagement. I understand that parent engagement is more important. But right now, there are so many. So many parents groups, you know, from different national origins or from different linguistic linguistic background. Who are not even on on the same level of parent involvement as as as. Others of parents. So how do, first of all, in relation to that expansion of parent mentoring. What are you looking for? Are you looking for some? Agencies, some organizations, some nonprofit organizations or? Or what kind of entities are we looking at in helping us with increasing? At the first level, our parent involvement and then. And then, you know, the the second level would be parent engagement. So those are my two basic questions for the time being. Thank you.
Great. So so I'm going to just tackle the second one first. So really on the parent mentoring, when we looked at and heard about what was happening at Saint Stevens. What you see is parents who are helping to mentor other parents in in many ways. To to be able to figure out how to support and engage in the school and in in the students' education. And and how to be more active in the in the children's like school life. And so it's really powerful because it's parents with parents. And so we, having talked to Saint Stevens a couple of times and I I was out there twice. Rafa was one, Ms. Polanco Garcia was wonderful in allowing that opportunity. You know, we we felt like this could be something that could be beneficial beyond the couple of schools that it was happening in. So what we did was to put out a request for proposals for any vendor so that. That could be anybody who has models that they could bring forward for us to be able to to work in partnership. To develop this out on a more systemic level. So that, you know, and in this particular case, it's parent mentoring other parents. And it's the the sense of how do we help our parents to both be involved and engage in the school that their student is in. In the case of the SIP, we we have. A couple of different deadlines in in August, but one of the biggest ones is the inclusive education plan. So I know you'll. I know you'll remember that the Council of Great City Schools report was about one hundred and sixty-five pages of special education recommendations. Additionally, there's an OMME strategic plan. And so it's taken time to be able to work through both of those to figure out how to be able to reframe the experience for our students in BPS as inclusive education. That meaning that if they are a student with disability, we help to get them in the, the general schools that we have to be able to have least restrictive environment so that they can actually attend the school down the street instead of having to go to a particular school. Right now, if you're a student with disabilities, particularly if it's more significant, you are limited in your choice. So the inclusive education really allows us to be able to open up all schools in a powerful way to students with disabilities. The plan will detail out everything from the inclusion planning teams to the professional development that school leaders and, and teachers and educators will go through to, to multi-tiered student support systems for what we will do and be able to provide in each of the schools to make sure that students who are struggling are getting the level of the support they need prior to going through an evaluation. So all of that will be, is detailed within that inclusive education plan. Additionally, in our district, given the large percentage of multilingual learners we have, we also are want, needing and wanting to make sure that students have access to native language. So it can mean that, for instance, there may be a paraprofessional in the classroom that speaks one of the languages, the predominant language of the students to clarify or the teacher, it can mean that there is a specialist that the students are encountering, whatever way we can increase the diversity of language for our staff will help ensure that students don't lose their native language completely in the process of being in our classrooms. So the, the inclusive education plan ties the two together in, in talking about what we will have to do for both sets of learners. So we term it as increasing, least, increasing the percentage of students with least restrictive environment for those with disabilities and increasing the percent of students who are multilingual with having some level of access to native language. And that report will also be shared with committee, obviously.
Mister Tran, do you have any?
Well, I'm, I'm partially, I'm partially satisfied because, you know, from, from, from the answer, it appears to me that the essence of the look act has not been, since the last administration until now, has not been really, really considered carefully for some kind of implementation. But, you know, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, thank you for your presentation tonight. First of all, I deeply understand this is your self-evaluation. So this is your perspective of how you have done in the past year or the year-to-date, I should say, and what have been your strengths and also your opportunities to focus on. And I appreciate that last page of it as well. I will withhold my comments about how I feel you have done because that is for each of us to do our individual evaluation over the next couple of weeks and then that will be the course of our conversation at the meeting in August. I did want to make one comment and then just ask a couple of clarifying questions about material that you presented, mainly stuff that was new to me. So I want to make sure I understand it, if that's okay. And, and the first is on the clarifying comment. I appreciate, believe it or not, even though it seemed quite voluminous that you wrote this, I appreciate the brevity of what you presented. I say that as a in the past with superintendent, sometimes we have gotten binders this thick with artifacts, you know, unbelievable and sometimes it's almost like, you know, just too much information. So I appreciate how you really tried to focus in on the work that you have done and tied with the standards and each of the points. One point that I, and this is just a comment, one point that I wish that was expanded a bit more. And I'll just leave that comment open for how you decide to handle that over the next couple of weeks as we do our evaluations is how you are feeling, how you feel you're doing versus the improvement plan with the state or the agreement with the state and the Council of Great City Schools recommendation. So a number of times in your write-up, you said as per the recommendations or implementing a number of the recommendations. We never quite saw and we've talked about this several times, here were the recommendations made, here's what I'm doing against them. And then particularly with the state plan, you know, really, I thought it may have been worthwhile to kind of have your own self-evaluation of how you feel you're doing against that. Because those are some critical things in front of us, right? So I think it's helpful for members or me as an individual member when I'm doing your evaluation to see how you're doing against that benchmark, not just the state standards. So I just wanted to make that comment. If you decide to do what I think would be helpful for each of us as we're working on our evaluation, so at least for me. A couple of clarifying questions, again, mainly points that this is the first I heard of it, so I just want to make sure I understood it. On the Franciscan children's, you said it went out to RFP and you're going to be implementing that, the work with them. Is that replacing the CBHM or the Complicancy Behavioral Health Model that we were doing with Children's Hospital and UMass Boston?
No, it's actually, it's, it's, it's separate. It, it came through Boston Health Commission. So this is actually in recognition that there there are a set of schools who when kind of you look at across incidences and those, you know, that can be trauma in the neighborhood, that can be with the population of the students that go there. It can be trauma within, you know, the school. When we look at it, there were kind of a clear five to 10 that we felt qualified for that. So this is really a, a different kind of model with Franciscans where they can go in and they're getting kind of their practicum and they're working in teams. And they'll, they'll work closely with our student support and social worker division. So, so it doesn't replace it, it complements it.
Okay. Is there going to be coordination between the both so that we're using similar language, that type of?
Oh, yes.
I mean, that is literally a nationally leading model that we have with children.
No, without doubt. No, without doubt. No, this actually just, this is much more to complement what we would consider kind of, when you think of universal impact, tier-two impact and tier-three, these are the schools that are much more tier-three where they have had, it could be in some cases, it's been a couple of students that they've lost during the course of the year. It could be, you know, stuff, stuff going on with staff with lots of trauma. So it's, it's really much more about who are the who are those that require the most? And then it's dispatching in those teams. And then there's also a level of training so that they can do trauma-informed practice training for the staff alongside the clinicians actually working to support.
Thank you. I just want to move quickly to a couple on standard two, we talked about transportation. I recognize what you laid out, the steps that were taken this year. One thing that you did mention, but I know has been a sticking point and I wonder what the focus has been on it, and that is if, if buses have GPS systems that are not working properly under the state, we actually count that as a zero. Right? As opposed to removing it from the data and looking what the on-time is, buses that are actually running with proper GPS monitors. That, I know it's been a sticking point with the state. It actually seems to me like a fairly easy fix of how do we make sure GPS monitors work on all of our buses and then we're getting accurate data that we can all be following? And I, and I didn't see a mention of that in.
Sure. I mean, I can, I can, I can respond verbally to that. So at one point, there was a significant at the end of last year, sorry, the previous year, there had been, we realized that there had been a GPS issue, we reported it during the summer, I believe. We corrected that and it, it had to do with a, a technical, when the buses pull up, their GPS triggers as they pull up in line. And when buses weren't hitting that sensor and they were going kind of around, then they were not registering. So that got fixed. What remains now, and it's come down considerably, I mean, we normally are like somewhere around three to four percent of missing GPS on a fleet, you know, seven hundred and fifty buses. Sometimes you'll have a GPS malfunction. Sometimes, and this is the one that we're working toward, the, the the bus may have one student assigned to it at a last drop. That student's not there, the bus doesn't need to go there, it never goes and trips the tracker. And so they have to report in manually. So we're working on that to try to get that percentage up higher. So really what's left is to, to work through those, but with, you know, a fleet of seven hundred and fifty, there's going to be some small portion that on any given day will malfunction or a driver, a substitute driver won't, won't trip the, the catchment. It is also accurate, Vice Chair, that rather than just making note of that data currently with the state, that is, those buses are automatically considered tardy or late. So they, they bring down the overall average from on-time percentage to late, and so they count against that average.
That's why I think, you know, it, it's a small amount, as you say, but if we're talking the difference between a ninety-one and a ninety-five percent, when, you know, that is what the agreement is with the state that we're working towards. It's just something that struck me. On facilities, I know there's a lot of work and you talk about it and what is coming. This is more common. I really hope when the facilities plan comes out, we see equal emphasis on parent and school community involvement. And when I've thought about the past couple of years, we have been top-down in some of our decisions. We are saying to a school, you are moving here, you are doing this. And then communities react, you're merging, etc. And then I thought when we have done school-based decision-making and the example I think that is best is we have said, we want high schools to expand to seven to twelve versus nine to twelve, but not all of them. You tell us, high schools, which one want to expand? And a number of school communities raised their hand and said, we'd like to do it. And when I think about, you know, potential upcoming moves or mergers, I think we're much better if we consider saying to communities, what do you think? You know, this is not me expressing an opinion on whether the O'Briens should move to West Roxbury, but I thought of the example as if we had said, we are going to renovate West Roxbury. We believe it's suited for a high school. We're gonna, you know, make it first-class STEM schools, etc. Which high schools would be interested? I would think a bunch of school communities may raise their hand and say, we're interested. And so as we consider renovations, mergers, consolidations, whatever you want to call it, I'd love to see more ways for communities to raise their hands versus is school-based decision-making versus top-down decision-making. So that's a comment as you start to put that together. On standard three, I do want to call out as, as Mister Tran did, as much as I am being hard, trying hard not to express opinion about your performance, I can't help but call out the labor piece. Eighteen negotiations, including a school leader one, which is long overdue. I spoke to two separate large urban districts superintendents last week, both of whom are facing expecting strikes this fall. And the fact that we're not facing that is, is kudos there. And so and also on the bus monitors, thank you, Ms. Palanco Garcia. I'm glad you called that workout. And with the Saint Stevens group, and that allowed us to hire a number more. A last piece on standard four, when you talked about the work with the chamber and the business. Again, this is clarifying because I hadn't heard an update on it recently. I hope we're really looking at what Charlotte is doing about how they work with the health systems there, what Dallas is doing, how they work with the local business community on needed certifications and what Long Beach is doing in gathering indirect industry expertise. So there are great examples around the country. I'll end with one question that I just want you to clarify a bit more in what you wrote. And that's about equitable literacy. Because, and I'm moving back to standard one. Having our students, you know, reading at, at base level is critical. Our numbers are way, way off there. Talk to me, just go a bit deeper, please, in your assessment of how you feel what you've done around equitable literacy? And how that, what you've done in this past year around equitable literacy? And how that is directly leading to increased opportunities for our students as well as quite frankly, closing some of the gaps that we're facing.
Sure. So.
And then I'm done, Madam Chair. Sorry.
All, all of the great points that I, I wrote down, particularly your, your first ones about some reflection around SIP in Council of Great City Schools. So relative to equitable literacy, again, I, I can't shout out enough Dr. Chen and Dr. Eccleston in this work because I think one of, one of the things about any kind of framework or new initiative is fidelity and making sure that it is being communicated, it's being supported, it's calibrated. Really, they have used the regional networks in a powerful way with professional learning communities where monthly, you know, the regions are getting together, they're going in, they're looking at classrooms, they're looking for evidence of equitable literacy in action. And then they come back and they talk about it as school leaders. I think this is also helpful with the coaches that we have to be able to reinforce and differentiate within the regions what we see and what might need additional support. I think the key here is the consistency, right, of, first of all, you know, having teachers, having educators confront their own bias in what they're teaching and in how they're teaching it. And so there's been a lot of deep work on this. When we say culturally and linguistically affirming, it means that we're putting high-quality instructional materials that students can see themselves in, can hear themselves in and can relate to in a way that wasn't previously done. And that's being done again with an expectation every day in every school and every class. And so it's, it's really that follow-through of execution and then having the reinforcement of the regional networks with professional learning community that is where you sort of test that out and you make sure that what you're doing conceptually is reaching the ground. And where there's problems, you're able to see it, you're able to, to change, you're able to address it, add additional resources in. The high-quality instructional materials is a good example of that. That was one of the pieces, key pieces of feedback from the ground. There's been deep investment in that now, working with school leaders. So what I see in, in the PLCs I've gone to is a different level of student engagement. Students with the text interacting, you know, talking, reading, discoursing with their, with other, other kids in the, in there. Being able to apply what it means to them in their experience set, in their history, in their culture. You know, in a way that you don't, you don't often see in a, in a typical class. So I do think that us landing on equitable literacy as an academics division wasn't critical for a step. I know we're in, right now, looking at math in a very deep way as well as a system and we will likely follow in a very similar fashion as we did with equitable literacy about how we actually deliver it out. But I'm proud of the work of the team. I'm proud of what I've seen in the PLCs and in the schools. And as I go around into the schools and I visit classrooms, I look for it as well. Asking students, what are you reading? What, you know, what, in, in what you read, what did you, you know, what, what struck you? What did you identify? Seeing how they work with the text, you know, seeing their phonics as it develops. You know, in writing is the other piece. Because oftentimes with literacy, we don't consider writing enough. And yet that is the output of what students are learning. That is how they express themselves. And so seeing all of that come together in the framework, it's been pretty powerful this year.
Are you confident that equitable literacy is going to lead to a, a lift in literacy results for our students?
Yes, and I think the deep work, the deep work that we need to do with MTSS in our schools and making sure that the right supports are given when a student is struggling with reading, reading interventions, you know, where appropriate, inclusion in general and making sure that our students are in classrooms where they're not being, you know, it's not remedial death, it's, you know, that they're moving forward and they're gaining access and things are scaffold at the same time that we are also reteaching what needs to be re-taught at a skill level. All of those things are going to work together to make strong literacy in our district.
Does this also tie to potentially closing the opportunity and achievement gaps for our students?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent. One of the best ways to not, you know, to close a gap is not to create one. So this goes all the way back to early childhood and the mixed delivery and making sure, you know, parents as first teachers, you know, in, in, in the. And making sure, you know, parents as first teachers, you know, and 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 the importance of that three-year-old, four-year-old. Um, you know, uh, the calibration we're doing within the city and within our, our classrooms. Um, and having that high-quality instruction happening right from the very first experience of the student set- setting foot.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Hawkins?
Uh, no, um, thank you, like Vice Chair O'Neill, because I was thinking some about. Uh, something that would be particularly helpful. I mean, I mean, you know, and this is just, you know, to think about in conversations as we, as we call you or. Do anything that we need to do to get more information from you over these next few weeks is. For me, thinking of sort of like a matrix of connectivity around like your theory of action, right? And I can see it sort of connecting to the requirements of the SIP. The requirements of, you know, alignment with the Council of Great City Schools, but also then the alignment of with us as a school committee because. I think about of the achievement gaps and or and and opportunity gaps. Um, that's called out in our values as a school committee and, you know, knowing. What progress we're making, how we're deciding to measure that. Is it through MCAS? Like assessment that we're, that we're looking at that, or are you intent on calling out other ways? That we're making progress on closing those gaps. Uh, because I mean, I I I'm not for one to, I, MCAS is the measure, but it's kind of like. I think that there are a number of other different ways that we could see our students improve, uh. And I want to make sure that, you know, within your evaluation, that, you know, you're able to speak to those things. To and that we're not missing that in your report. Um, so I would definitely appreciate something that sort of ties to each one so that we know, all right, this aligns with. Our goals as a committee, this aligns with, uh, you know, the SIP and things like that. So that would be helpful. So that's more of a, a, a comment. And then the last piece is, you know, again, that master facilities plan. Um, as we start to approach its due date, you know, be curious around like the schedule of updates. Um, for how we're going to see the community involvement, um, rather, community engagement and. And so I I've mentioned this before, I think we're on a. At a very early part of that spectrum, I think we're actually more in the consult phase and how we sort of deal with families and not necessarily even involvement. Um, but, you know, I think you're, I think your thinking is is spot on about moving it to a place of empowerment. Where like their voice actually holds weight in the decision-making process. Um, so I am curious about the rules. The, as you all are developing this, this, this plan for. The, uh, for the master facilities plan, how is the community going to be engaged authentically? And, you know, you know, this is a, a, a great opportunity for them to, to be in that stage of empowerment. And so I'm very curious as to how you, you're gonna be intentional about doing that.
Yeah, I think we, we have, um, we will be coming before you, um, in the, in the fairly the early fall. Uh, to talk about, um, both a rubric that we will be working on, um, that factors in. It kind of ties in a number of these reports, uh, but also speaks to the community process piece. Um, and that'll actually be a rubric that school committee will vote on. Um, so we'll be introducing that to you, uh, on the early side. I think once the facilities dashboard is, um. Is ready, right, is is, uh, is prime time, uh, that will, uh, obviously open up all kinds of conversations in a positive way. Um, both with the community and with the school committee about the state of our buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, I'm gonna jump in for a moment and tell other people come back up. I'm, I wanna thank both Dr. Hawkins and, um, Mr. O'Neill of bringing attention to. The issues around the opportunity and achievement gaps, because I feel like there is so much work being done. The question is, how do we keep our eye on that process? Um, and how are we helping schools to think about this? As well, um, I guess part of my question is, what has been the reaction? Um, to schools, to the urgency of the things that have been raised in the SIP. Um, that have been raised by the work that you are doing as you reorganize with your team. Um, with the issue around inclusion going on, there's a lot that is sort of. Pushing a new level of urgency around, um, the state of education in Boston at the school level. And, you know, what do you see happening at the school level? How many of our schools at this point, the piece that you opened with, which is sort of our promise to students? How many of our schools could actually step up and say, we fulfill the work that we are doing is adequately. Going to make those statements that are actually, we are providing those issues. Or are they? You know, are they improving? Are they just beginning? How could we, you know, analyze where are our schools? And actually seeing that as a promise fulfilled.
Right, so I think, I think, uh, there's a couple of things that come to mind. I think one is. With our transformation schools, we get that real deep dive, right, on on lots of levels with those transformation schools. And as we've presented multiple times, you can see with that intentionality, those schools are making progress. They are working toward the district goals. I think, um. Some of this is calibrating the field, right, to, to where you, when we're talking about apples, it's apples. Um, and that hasn't happened, right, in the past. And so that, I think school leaders have been receptive to that, they want that. Um, and so the work that's been done with the Q SIPs. Where, you know, every single year, this is the process, schools get support through their regional model with that. They're able to share their goals and they're getting the coaching support that they need to do that. That's a, that's an example of like a mechanism that helps us point north to like where we need to be. The regional networks, I can't under, I I just can't state enough how critical they are in a district our size. You know, when I, when, when we were at the, the Harvard, um. The Harvard training together, you know, and and you, you know, you, you speak to the other urban supes, one of the biggest difficulties with large districts. Is you can have a vision and great ideas here, but getting that out to the field where it's actually happening on a daily basis. That is the challenge everybody faces. And so this idea of the regional networks, as, as I described it, and what we're doing with them and how we're doing. And the feedback we've gotten from our own leaders that I included in there, like where they were in terms of satisfaction. You know, back in the fall compared to where they are in the spring, I think shows that the system itself is starting to stick, right? Like where those systems and structures are starting to stick as we're making the changes to the central office departments. That are gonna strengthen those systems. Um. In terms of, uh. I, I think the, the tipping point issue here, right, is that. Any one of the things we're talking about, like just take SIP, any one of those things would be considered. A large-scale implementation in a given year in a district, any one of them.
Yeah.
So when you put all of them together. And you, and you talk about the magnitude of what needs to happen for inclusive learning in 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 schooling to happen here. For the field, that can feel overwhelming. Because it's a lot of change that's gonna need to happen. So part of what we, part of what my job is and our job is as a team, is to both manage that change. And how it's happening and give the relative support that's needed for the change as it's happening. And so that's gonna be for next year and the year after and the year after, as we start to kind of lift our system back up again.
How do schools see themselves holding themselves accountable? For this, because it's not been unknown for us that we've got schools that are failing. And people walk in those schools every day. And walk out, and those schools still fail. How, wh- what is that sort of personal urgency or, or change? I know we're investing more in professional development, some of it is mandatory. But what other ways are schools themselves sort of taking their small piece of this? And recognizing if we don't have it at a hundred and twenty schools, we're not gonna have it in a district.
Yeah, so I think, I think staying with the. Staying within the, the di- like the change and the transformation that we're pushing. That for leaders is one of the best things we can do to get traction. When we start making all kinds of, well, we tried this for two years and it didn't work, we're gonna switch to this. Or a new superintendent comes in, we're gonna abandon all this, and we're gonna switch to this. That's what has happened. And so for the leaders to actually have multiple years where they can focus and refocus on the same things. And keep traction matters. I also think, and it's like kind of interwoven throughout, um, you know, my, uh, my. A value, my self-evaluation, but we are moving to a data-informed system. Data is at all parts, right? We're not there yet. And and there's, there's, you know, we're, we're often used to saying qua- qualitative things, like we're doing all these things. But we're not used to putting the actual data and the evidence with it. That's a big change. That's something that leaders are welcoming, wanting, and they see that that's the new reality. So they're working hard with the network teams, with the data specialists, to be able to see the data that tells them what they need to improve on. And the data that tells them they are improving, right? It's both. And I think as a district with our central offices, it's the same thing. Those, you know, the key performance measure, you know, indicators. Um, you know, I think measurements at all levels, as, you know, as we're working on our inclusive, um. Is, uh, our inclusive plan, uh, that is, that's one of the critical pieces to that plan. Is the data outcomes that drive it, that says at each step. From, from a continuous improvement side, this is working, this is working, this is not working, this is working. Right, so we just, we haven't had the ability to do that as a district. With so much change, and then obviously with the pandemic, data has been hard in general to sort of land on. But now we're starting to get that traction and with that traction, um, you know, you start to see those changes in a positive direction build.
At this point, I know it's only been ten months, but at this point, is there, what would you look at and say that you are the most. Proud of where, what progress has been made even in this short ten months?
I mean. Ninety percent of an organization's budget is their people, right, is your talent. I think what we've been able to do, both with our la- with labor and the contracts. I think the school principal contract and stabilizing the principal core. Recruiting the team that's here right now, I, hands down, I'd go in, I, I would put up against any district right now, like. We have some of the most, the sm- some of the smartest, most dedicated folks that are thinking, both in the schools and at the district level. That's probably the thing I'm most proud of, because it's the thing that's gonna ultimately pay off. I can, it's hard for me to answer that, because I'm proud of so much that the team has done, as, as you can see from what I wrote. Um, I'm, I guess the, the thing that would come in second for me is that we are not in a luxury, either. School committee or us of saying, well, this is the one priority. A ship sailed a long time ago, like, we have to lift the system. And that means we have to lift it, sometimes this goes like this and this drags, and then other times it goes like this and then this catches up. But we have to literally lift the system without tipping the system. And that is strategic. And so I'm proud that as a collective team, and I believe with you as a body. We are moving the work in the upward direction and doing it a way that is sustainable, that the system can handle.
Great. Alright, we're, we're coming up on time. Are there any more questions from? The members at this point. I know people need more time and, um, ensure, um. Superintendent, you know, I'm, I'm sure that members will also reach out to you individually for, for clarification, so. Okay, I just wanna explain what, what's happening next. Over the next few weeks, each member will write their own evaluation. Um, then Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neill will compile everything into one summative assessment. That will be presented at our August thirtieth meeting. The committee will vote on the superintendent's final performance rating on September the thirteenth. So I'll now open it up to the committee for any questions you might have about the evaluation process. So. No? Okay.
Just clarifying, that includes me, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Yes, I think you're absolutely, you are a member of this body and you should be receiving. The materials to, um, do the evaluation as well. Okay, thank you. Alright, so I'm gonna just go over for the public that is watching just what the timetable is over the next couple of weeks. So tonight, we, this tonight, July twenty-sixth, the superintendent presented her self-evaluation. On the twenty-seventh, um, the electronic evaluation forms will be sent to each committee member to complete. On August, um, sixteenth, individual evaluations are due. And then August sixteenth to the eighteenth, Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neill will review and consolidate. Those themes in preparation for the August thirtieth. So members, we have until August sixteenth. To get our individual evaluations done. On the twenty-first, um, Stephen and Michael will meet with Superintendent Skipper to go through the evaluations. Share their summary of the results. Following that meeting, Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neill will make any edits to the presentation based on their meeting. On August twenty-third, the presentation and evaluation will be complete and will be sent out for translation. On the twenty-fifth of August, the materials will be sent to members and on the thirtieth, we will meet, um. And the presentation will be by Dr. Alkins. And on September thirteenth, um, on this, we will vote on the summative evaluation and. Professional performance ratings. So look tomorrow for the, um, forms to be sent. And, um, with that, I wanna say thank you. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just, just one, just one quick question, um, after I, after I completed the, uh, evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I must send that to, uh. Member O'Neill and member Alkins?
I believe of probably on, I don't have that information, but I believe you'll send it back to, um, Ms. Sullivan. And Ms. Sullivan will then compile and get everything over to Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neill.
And, uh. I can personally send it to, directly to the superintendent as well, I guess. Like the, the previous year. So in another word, as, as I submit my evaluation. To, uh, the committee, through, uh, Liz. I can also CC that to the superintendent herself.
I believe so. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. She'll get it one way or the other, so yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? If none, I, I also wanna express my gratitude to Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neill for leading this important process for us this year. Is there any new business? If not, that concludes our business for this meeting. And the next remote school committee meeting will take place on August thirtieth at five P M. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Have a great summer. See you with.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye.